All right, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, January ninth. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
We're going to get right into scheduled action for tonight. Before I do that, I'll grant Westcat permission to videotape the meeting. Is there anybody else recording tonight's meeting that needs permission? Okay. We're going to take one item out of order because our DPW director is tending to some issues down on Clavatree and Washington Street. So, we're going to talk about the Glan Door Road markings and items related to that. And we have Todd Fortune with us tonight. Back in November, I think it was, you were here with Ken Ho from Beta talking about the success of the traffic calming and an issue was raised with regard to Glan Door Road and yellow striping that was used to delineate sides of the road when people turned off of Forbes. And we asked you to go back and look at maybe other ways that that could be handled to accomplish the same end result, and that's public safety and keeping cars or trucks on the right side of the road. But maybe not having double yellow line in a quiet residential street. So, tell us what you found.
So, basically, our option was, and what we're proposing to the Board of Selectmen, is to replace the double yellow line, which is currently out in place at the intersection of Glan Door and Forbes. It's approximately ninety-five feet long. And our proposal to the Board of Selectmen is to replace that with a flush concrete median strip, but it will not be raised. It's just an imprint more so than anything. And then eliminating the remaining forty, forty or so feet that's there, that will be there of the W O line.
And do we do that anywhere else in town? Do we have that similar treatment?
We do. At the intersection of Sunset and Summer, there's a, it was, it's pretty much an identical feature. It's a little shorter, but similar.
How has that worked for us?
It's worked. It's, it's a flush imprint that acts pretty much what, like what the W O line acts as. It's really just to take a wide intersection and clearly delineate where your left or right turn is supposed to be. So, I mean, whether or not people adhere to that is another story, but for the most part, I've seen and I've observed that it is somewhat effective.
So, there's vibration to the car a little bit, there's...
On this particular imprint, we're not quite sure. I mean, right now, the proposal is, is just a flush imprint. It would, our options would either be what's out on one oh nine, something similar to that in texture, or we could just do simply a flush, smooth, concrete pad. As far as noise or, or any of that being an issue, I wouldn't be concerned at all. There would be none.
But it seems to me the one I, the Sunset is, there are ridges.
There are.
It's not that it makes noise, but that you'd feel it if you were driving on it.
That's like a, almost like a, not a rumble strip, but it looks, appearance-wise, would look like a rumble strip type of feature. So, we could do that. I think that's just a matter of us talking to the contractor and figuring out what's best. Where it is, it's a residential neighborhood, my personal feel would probably be some sort of like a brick type of imprint or something along the lines of that, where it gives you some sort of consistency with what's out on Canton Street currently and what we put in for the traffic calming features.
Now, that's like what's at Pond in Clavatree.
Yes, except for the, what's at Pond in Clavatree Street is actual cobblestone.
No, no, the, but when you go down to the Pond, there's a little patch of road that it's not raised. It's flat, but it's got stone.
Yep, yep. That, yeah, that's actual cobblestone that's in Pond.
Right.
This feature wouldn't be that. This is...
I know, but I'm still...
But the same idea, same concept.
You get the visual unless it's covered in snow these days.
Exactly.
And now, this isn't something we act on, but maybe you guys want to ask some questions too, and then you can give us some guidance as to what to do.
So, Todd, you talked to the neighbors and all set with it?
Yep. There was one neighbor that was, is really concerned with what was out there as far as the double yellow line feature. The last correspondence I had had with her, and she was very pleased with this being the option, and the quote within the email was, "This is great."
Okay, good.
No, I'm good. I appreciate you looking into it.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a big change to get rid of the double yellow lines.
It is. It's great. There's a cartoon rendering right there, and sometimes, sometimes it's just simple. It'll look at something like that rather than a set of plans and...
But the fact is, the yellow lines would fade over time, but this is...
True.
We'll accelerate that. So, when are you thinking you could do this?
Springtime with the imprint itself, even if we just went with a straight concrete, the weather isn't conducive to this at all.
Yeah, so April.
Yeah, we would just factor it into our springtime, some early summer projects and just get it done. It's a simple project, so it's...
So, Mike, we don't need to take any action because we didn't take action on the, at the level before anyway.
You give the blessing, he gets it done in the spring.
All right, so if you run into any issues, let us know.
Okay.
But otherwise, we'll assume it's in your capable hands.
Very good.
Okay.
And just the item that I'm going to tend to now, it's all resolved. It's just more or less a cleanup, so there won't be any more issues there.
Go have some fun.
I also think it's worth noting, they did a great job this weekend.
Oh, I was just, absolutely. How did it go in general, in terms of cleanup?
Guys, guys are awesome. Our guys are awesome. The contractors are awesome. Brendan does a fantastic job, so...
And I was out Sunday morning and had reason to drive by the high school, which I saw was beautifully cleaned, and the pool was being used, and there were people there, and that was early Sunday morning, so...
It's right on the top of our list.
Glad to hear. Well, thank the crew.
And we're all surprised it wasn't any school on it.
I know. Could have made up a couple of days.
Well, you know what, but it was still, it was still used, and that was great. People were out and able to get to the pool, so... All right, thanks for the update and for addressing Glan Door, and hopefully that will just go off without a hitch in the spring.
Okay.
Thank you for...
Thanks, Todd.
Good luck out there. Okay. So, back to our scheduled first item on the agenda. Carol and Emily, do you want to come up?
What happened on Clavatree?
This is a third time around. This is great. So, yes, we have Carol Joy here and Emily Medinaf. And what we are talking about is scheduling of the third I Am Strong Foundation Annual Five K Run Walk and everything else that goes with it.
Exactly.
Event, which is great. And I asked if you wanted to talk this year, because I know in the past it's been new and we're just kind of handling it, but I thought maybe you want to let people know what's going on with the foundation and just your plans. Whatever you want to say and whatever you don't, don't worry about it.
Okay, well, this is our third annual five K that we're having. It's the largest fundraiser that we hold, the Armstrong Organization. We're just under two years old. The first year we had the race, we had about seven hundred runners, completely unexpected. We raised about seventeen thousand dollars. Last year, we had approximately eight hundred and fifty runners, and we raised about twenty-six thousand dollars, which has allowed us to hold three grant cycles so far. We've distributed thirty-six thousand dollars in grants in these three cycles. We have speaker series at the Thurston Middle School, a speaker series at the high school. We funded a movie, raising awareness of autism. We funded teen assessment, youth assessment at risk for the Judge Baker Children's Center. We created a safe room at Boston Arts Academy, one of the high schools in Boston. We, what else have we done?
The MIAA?
We've, yep, yep. So, in the ten grants, we've a variety of different things that we've done. We have also sent twenty different coaches, teachers, administrators to Teen Depression Conference that the MIAA sponsors every year. And this year, we're not only going to do that, we're also going to be sponsors, one of the key sponsors of the whole program. What else have we done? We've had two programs that we have personally sponsored. We've brought in Kevin Bril, teen, I guess he's not a teen, he's in early twenties, but he does, he's, does a raising awareness of teen depression, right? And we had Meg Hutchinson and her sister who came in this past fall and talk about Meg's cycle through depression and how it impacts families and what families can do. And those are programs that we offer for free to Westwood and all the surrounding communities. So, primarily, what I Am Strong does is raise awareness, awareness of teen mental health struggles. And we have managed to, in the short time we've done, raise the money that we raise, and we've already given back about forty-six thousand dollars to the Westwood community and all the surrounding communities. We ran some numbers recently for, for different reasons and have shown that we, of every dollar raised, eighty-eight cents of our, of that money goes back to the community. So, we have great support from everybody, so it's awesome.
And well deserved. You should.
So, we're here hoping that we can once again have our third annual five K, which would be May seventh, Sunday morning, the same routine, starts at Flahive, runs only on the streets for a brief period of time, runs through the woods and around the high school track and area. Our expectation is probably about the same number of runners, maybe a little bit higher. We've reached out, we have some running groups who want to run now. We had a kids' running group from Canton last year that had about twenty-five kids who were like eight to ten who came. It was their first road race ever, so they were very excited. We've already spoken to the rec department and to the high school, and they have, they have everything on hold. I have a message into the police department. We get a detail there every year. We've never had any problems, so we're hoping everything goes as smoothly.
That's great. Any questions, guys?
No, I just wish we could guarantee good weather. Last year was a little bit rougher.
We got the wind, so...
It was a little rougher. It was the first year.
We had a DJ. Right, we were an awesome DJ who goes. It's great. So, I, I think this is awesome. I've said it to you before, if there's anything we can do to help besides just approving you doing it, you guys do an amazing amount of work, and what an incredible group, incredible group of people you bring together, so you're an inspiration.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion.
So, I move that we approve the third annual I Am Strong Foundation Five K Run/Walk Race on Sunday, May seventh, two thousand seventeen, with registration to begin at nine at Flahive Field, contingent upon any final requirements from the public safety. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Of course, none. Again, if you need us, let us know, and good luck with the planning.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations on your good work. Okay, Nora, if you can come up and join us. We have two public hearings on the docket for tonight. The first one is a common vicufrum license for LPM Holding Company doing business as Epicurean Feast.
Yes, so for this first one, we have Russell Keenan. He'd like to sit here as well. So, this application is for a food service facility at six ninety Canton Street. There had been a previous facility there which left in October, and Epicurean Feast took over before the end of the expiration of the CV license. However, they weren't able to get their information into the Health Department in time to get a full CV license in November when we first heard about them.
Yeah, we took over in November, on short notice.
So, they've been operating as an employee cafeteria, and now they'd like to get a full CV license so they could open to not only employees, but members of the general public as well. They have since gone through the procedures, have all the application materials have been filed, they have their Board of Health approval, they have their inspections complete, and they're just here to ask you if you would replace the prior CV license with a new one for Epicurean.
And I checked online, you have other business, other similar operations? This is an expansion?
Yeah, we have about a hundred in the Northeast. We have another one in Maine, in Westwood, EverSource.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Oh, you run theirs.
Yeah.
Got it. Would you expect, then, that the public would be able to come in?
It wouldn't really be open to the public. It'd be more family members of people that work in the building may come and go, but it's not really a, we're not going to advertise in the public, we're not going to be, you know, doing any kind of that. It'd be more, it's more of a private...
Customers or people that come in?
Repetitive customers every day that we see, but again, they may have a family member that may show up for occasional, but that's usually about it.
So, are you subsidized by the business that has the space, or...
Um, there's a small subsidy based upon the landlord of the building.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Questions?
No, seems pretty straightforward.
Sure does. Go ahead.
Okay, I move that we approve the issuance of the CV license to LPM Holding Company, Inc., doing business as Epicurean Feast at six ninety Canton Street. All right, second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, none. So, you're good to go. Thank you for working with Nora and keeping it in compliance before we could get to this stage.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good to meet you. Okay, and next up, we have Lamar Jones. Hello, welcome back. I think it was back in December, not November, late November?
November, yes.
Lamar, you were here for, before us, and you have submitted a new application, which is what we have before us tonight, and it's doing business as Hudson Auto and Detail for Class Two Auto Dealer's License for Second-Hand Motor Vehicles, wholesale only, and the business operates via the web from an office you already have at twelve hundred East Street in Westwood. So, Nora, how about you give us an update?
All right, so as you may recall, when Mr. Jones was here in November, there was a concern about his prior application because it involves storage of vehicles at an off-site facility, and that facility was located in Stoughton, and we weren't able to, to either check on the facility and ensure that it was an appropriate facility for that storage, but there was also some concern about the distance from Westwood. So, Mr. Jones asked for a withdrawal of that application. You granted that without prejudice. He then came in and filed a new application, and he explained in this application that his intention is to connect buyers and sellers over the Internet and to take possession of a car, only then to deliver it to the, the buyer of the car. So, he's not intending to store. He has, in accordance with the, the state law regulating Class Two licenses, he has today provided a letter from the Dedham Service Center on Washington Street in Dedham that is agreeing to service the vehicles if needed.
Can we have that letter?
Yes. And I had also asked Mr. Jones to resubmit his application on a new application form. The first application was submitted on the current form, the second one was submitted on the outdated form, which was available on our website, so he, that form, I believe, has since been taken down, and this new one has been posted, so the new form appears to be correct.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, and maybe my colleagues will as well. Do you know where the auctions will be taking place that you hope to buy the automobiles from? Have you sourced those?
There's quite a few. There's a ton. There's Framingham, Odessa, Quincy.
Generally Massachusetts-based, then?
There's a lot of them. There's some in New Hampshire as well. A lot of them are on the Internet, so I do a lot of, you know, bidding and stuff on the Internet.
Okay.
Yeah, a few of them.
And I was looking for this letter. I have to say, we can accept it, but I'd love to, if we do a positive vote, I'd love it to be subject to confirmation that they did do this letter because it's on the letterhead or something. So, I don't know who Jeff Berry is or that it's definitely from the company, so if you, that would be an issue for me to get confirmation. Do you have any questions, John?
So, I, I guess, I, I need you to take me through a transaction. So, you buy a car at an auction, you advertise it on the web.
Yeah, well, I buy a car at the auction on the web.
On the web?
Yeah.
Okay. And it's delivered to where?
I can deliver it. If I buy a car in Massachusetts, let's say, customer goes onto my website, because we're going to build a website. So, if a customer goes onto my website, they see a car that they, you know, they, they want, I can go and buy that car. You see what I'm saying? At the auction form. I deliver it to them. You know, you get dealer plate, you deliver it to them. If something goes wrong, say, they say, "I don't, you know, want the car," I can take that car directly back to the, the auction. You know, you have thirty days to, you know, to store it, or you have to pay fees each day you leave it there. So, I can bring it directly back and resell the car as well.
So, there'll be no cars at this facility in Westwood?
Oh, no cars, no cars at all.
There'll be no, I'll meet you there to turn over the keys?
No.
No used cars coming in or out?
No used cars at all.
No storage?
I have my, my other business there, my vans, but they're commercial vans.
So, you're an intermediary. You bring the transaction together.
I pray it right to them.
But you don't buy cars at auction without a buyer on the other end to take it from...
Yeah, I wouldn't buy a car unless somebody called me and said, "Well, this, this kind of car, make or model," then I would buy it.
Mr. Jones, what are you planning to do as far as signs? Am I going to look at more sandwich boards in front of twelve hundred East Street?
No, I don't, I don't even have a sign. I don't have a sign out there. Well, I did have a Mr. Window sign. I had the little, I had the little sign, but I take it out as, you know, in and out. You seen that?
I see it every day, that's all I know.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, no, it's gone now, it's known now.
They're gonna have another one out there that says Hudson Auto and Detail?
No sign, no, no signs. That's just strictly in the net. No signs at all.
You looked like you wanted to say something.
I would point out that no sandwich board signs are allowed anywhere in Westwood except for special event signs that are approved by the town administrator, so just make that announcement.
In other words, that sign you put out is not okay.
It's in, it's in now, it's in now anyways.
Yeah, but when it comes back out, it's not okay. Just so you know, that's what she's saying. So, as I said before, I think that this letter needs verification to know that indeed Dedham Service Center is going to be servicing the vehicles if you need them to.
You can call them if you want to.
I will, that was, I would want Nora to do that. Are there any other questions or concerns that board members have? We do have a letter, a memo from Jeff Silva, our Chief of Police, that presents no issues for us in terms of his review.
I guess my only concern with, is if you're going to use the Dedham Service Center is, I mean, if they cancel you, how are we going to know if, you know, if they stop doing business with you? How are we going to know that you still have someplace else?
Well, I have a couple of, Dedham's like around the corner from where I live, because I live in Dedham, and I've been dealing with them for a long time, so I know them well. And I bring my cars there, my personal car there to, you know, get fixed.
Something we can do about that, isn't there?
So, what I could do is, when I contact Dedham Service Center, I can ask them to send us a letter saying that they will notify us if, for any reason, the business relationship changes.
Okay. You know, run concurrent with the license, any other...
Right, right. And then if, if for some reason they cease doing business, then Mr. Jones can submit another facility, a letter from another facility where he's taking the cars.
I think good.
Okay, so anybody want to make a motion? Two contingencies, confirmation...
Yeah, confirmation and...
That Dedham Service submitted this letter and that they acknowledged that they should notify the town should they cease to be the service company of record.
Right.
Let me write that down, question two. Okay, so I move that we approve the application submitted by Lamar Jones doing business as Hudson Auto and Detail for a Class Two Auto Dealer's License for Second-Hand Motor Vehicle Sales, wholesale only, via the web from his office located at twelve hundred East Street, subject to a confirmation letter from the Dedham Service...
Not confirmation letter, but confirmation this letter is from.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, confirmation that it is in fact from the Dedham Service Center, with the contingency that in the event they no longer continue to do business with Hudson Auto and Detail, that they notify the town immediately so that we can rectify that issue. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. So, you have your approval?
Thank you.
Subject to, you have to work with Nora to make sure that the contingencies that we said are fulfilled. If they are not, there's not, there's no license, that she has to satisfy those requirements that we put on it, okay? So, you in turn have to set it, well, she'll let you know if she's satisfied it, because she'll reach out to Dedham.
Do she want me to have him contact, or she can contact?
No, you can talk to Nora about that. I have a feeling she'll make the call. You had to comment?
Tara, please.
Oh, okay. All right, so you're good. You can just talk to Nora. Kara, did you come in? Oh, Kara. Todd came by a few minutes ago because he had a DPW sewer main issue that he was resolving, so we took it up first, but said if you came in after, if you wanted to come in. You want to come up briefly?
Oh, sure.
And I'll let you know what we discussed?
Oh, yeah, sure, that'd be great.
Yeah, sorry about that. We just, he needed to get back out to the, the situation as it was. So, he told us about the strip that he wants to put in...
Yes.
In lieu of the yellow painted lines.
Yes.
And he would be able to do that in April.
Okay.
Now, we don't officially approve it. We gave him our sort of acknowledgement that that's what he would do.
Okay.
And that's really where we left it, and I think it should be consistent with what he might have conveyed to you via an email.
Yes, yes. He, he ran the plans by me and showed me the renderings, and I think it looks like a great solution from my perspective.
Good.
And I think the folks on the street would be happy about it.
Okay, so if you have any concerns, you let them know.
Okay.
But we're right now out of the loop.
Okay.
We, we said yes, we think that's good.
Okay.
Since you're telling us in person, you're on board with that, we're, say it again, we think that's good.
Okay.
And you'll have to wait till the springtime, though.
Okay, and then who does the final approval, or?
It's...
It'll be done.
It'll be done. Okay, perfect. Okay, great. Then I'll round back with the folks on the street and let them know.
Sorry, we just wanted to get him out of here so he could do that.
No, thank you, thank you very much for that.
Yeah. Mike saw you come in.
I was waiting, so I appreciate you catching me coming in.
We don't want to make you do that, okay?
Okay, great. Well, thank you all for your time, and I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, take care.
Okay, um, back up. Wegmans?
Yes. Joe Devlin is here representing Wegmans.
Hello, Attorney Devlin, how are you?
Good, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you. Okay, we have what seems to be a fairly small matter relating to Wegmans.
It is. It's a request for a change in officers and change in beneficial interest due to retirement, I believe.
You want to just give us a little briefing on it?
Yeah, the new forms are calling this a change in beneficial interest, but it's really change of, the old change of officer.
Okay.
Paul Speranza, who was a longtime secretary and actually chief legal counsel for Wegmans, retired, and James Leo, who is also a longtime employee in the General Counsel's Office, an attorney for them, is the new secretary, which is happening at the headquarters in Rochester.
Yes, I was going to ask.
No change to any of the operations here. I've been to Burlington, Northboro, Newton, this is my last stop, and haven't been any issues.
Yeah, I wouldn't think there are any questions.
No.
Okay.
So, I move that we approve the change in officers slash change in beneficial interest for Wegmans Off-Premises Wine and Malt Beverage License to James Leo and assign the local, and sign the Local Licensing Authority Review Board formally a Form forty-three. Second.
It's a mouthful.
Yeah.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. So hopefully we were easier than all the rest, because that's pretty straightforward.
As always.
As always. Okay, good to see you. Take care. Alright, um, Pam. As usual, we get a, every meeting update on where we are with the budget process. Um, I understand, I'll start with, that you, um, met with the finance commission last week. It was not a budget update. Uh, because we're still going through that review, but you did have a meeting to update them on the split tax rate, meals tax and other things. So they're pretty much caught up, and now we're in the budget season.
I went through a, a, a pretty long, um, package with them, really going through everything that you've gone through over the last several meetings. We took advantage that the, you know, FinCom doesn't have the warrant yet, and without a fall town meeting, that they had a couple of meetings this fall where we could come in and really go through the financial information. They have a few new members, so it was a good opportunity. So we really, uh, went through everything. So tonight I just have a quick update, just to let you know where we're at and what we would be doing over the next month with the budget. Just, um, to tell you about the FinCom meeting, um, since the last meeting, the tax bills issued, quick revenue update, and then where we are with the, uh, overall budget and the municipal budget, and then what our next steps will be. Uh, but since we last came into the selectmen, a couple of things, uh, we did send out our actual tax bills. Uh, those just went out, um, to our residents last week. And we just wanna point out that we include an insert with the tax bills that explains, um, everything that goes into the taxes. Including, uh, valuations, what happened with commercial and residential property, the split tax rate. Um, and this year we really emphasized the tax relief, and we had talked about that at one of your meetings previously. Uh, that with the steps that the selectmen took in last year's budget and that town meeting approved, we were able to drive down that final tax bill to about a one point three percent increase versus what potentially could have been a four point seven percent increase. So we wanted to just emphasize that. Some people don't look in their tax bill because their mortgage company pays their taxes. That insert is online, they can take a look, but it really does kinda lay out, um, everything that's happening with the tax bill, as well as gives them information on where they can go and look up, uh, values in town, um, follow up with the assessors if they have any, uh, questions on their values.
Can you put the, the copies of that, or a copy of that in the annual warrant book as an appendix in the back of the book?
In the warrant book at, at town meeting, yes.
To remind people of what went out?
Yes.
We can keep trying to make sure people see.
Yeah, we try to get it out there, and that's one of the items we did bring to the FinCom and showed them, just to try to get more people to be aware. Um, that that's there, a lot of good information in the insert, uh, really kinda walked through the whole billing process. And then again, really for FY seventeen, emphasized the, the very specific steps that were taken in the budget process to, uh, deal with the tax bill. Uh, and then as we've already mentioned, the other thing is that we went in, uh, again last week to the FinCom and the second of a really long uh, walkthrough of kinda all of our financial information, you know, how we closed out last year, how revenue and expenditures look. Walked through the process that, um, you went through on the tax classification and the shift with commercial and residential. Uh, and made sure that they understood that tax relief, uh, especially with the new members who hadn't gone through that discussion about what it took to provide that relief. Trying to make sure they understood that, because if we look to do similar things in this year's budget process, that they'd be up to speed. So we talked again about commercial property, our capital budget process. Uh, really spent a lot of time talking about how we try to balance the operating budget with all the other needs, uh, that are also going on, uh, in other areas. And really tried to emphasize and walk through with some specific numbers the importance of making sure our operating budgets are sustainable. Uh, that we don't, you know, we have to be really careful not to kinda build, uh, too big that we can't sustain budget. So I think they were pleased, um, to be able to spend some time on it, you know, and again, particularly some of the newer members. Um, and as you pointed out, Nancy, without even having this year's budget in front of them, it was almost easy just to really do this as a, a general walkthrough and make sure they could ask any questions and, uh, that type of thing. Uh, and then just, uh, a quick update on the revenue side. Two items since we've been in last. Um, the meals tax, we come in and report to you every time we have an update on that. We receive a quarterly distribution from the state. Uh, again, this was adopted by the town at two thousand and fourteen fall town meeting, effective January one, two thousand and fifteen. The funds are, uh, set aside in a restricted account and it can only be used with town meeting action. So, uh, the chart here just shows the time period of every, uh, distribution. The first, uh, column of numbers is the quarterly amount, and then the column on the most right-hand side, the cumulative total to date. Uh, and if you look at the last number in the, uh, quarterly amount, our most recent one that came, uh, on December thirtieth was ninety thousand dollars. Uh, again, a slight increase from the previous quarter, so we've had a very steady increase over the last couple of quarters, um, in that distribution. And our cumulative total now is five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Uh, so really it started to kinda build, um, built up a bit, is sitting in this account, and we had talked at your last meeting that, um, you know, we're gonna s- start now to talk about, uh, what can we do with this fund? Uh, we do have a long-range financial planning committee meeting this week, and that group is gonna discuss, uh, the meals tax. Uh, and really look at, is it time to start using something with this money, or do we need to see, uh, a little bit more activity before we take some action on that? And when we went through the meals tax with the FinCom, we emphasized again for new members, uh, that when the town put this into place, this local option meals tax, we really emphasized that this is not something that we should use for operating budget needs as it can fluctuate uh, with the economy, or just, you know, if a restaurant went out of business, or that type of thing. Uh, but that it's a great funding source for things like, uh, capital budget items or into our capital, uh, capital fund where we save for things we know are coming. So some, some nice revenue, and again, nice to see that last quarter kinda up again, uh, from the previous one.
So Pam, if we kept the money in whatever the account is that it's in right now, and we wanted to spend it, it would be a traditional spending article, capital expenditure article, that requires a majority at town meeting?
Yes, we would just have to note somewhere that as a funding source, like we do with free cash or.
But if we put it in a stabilization account, like a capital stabilization account, it's two-thirds vote to go in and two-thirds vote to go out?
To go out, yes. And then finally, just, uh, on another revenue, state aid, um, next week, at the end of the week, is the MMA annual meeting. Um, and they have indicated that the governor will be coming, uh, as he always does, um, and give information on, um, the state budget. So that's always our initial look, uh, at local aid for FY eighteen. He's coming today late. I believe he's going to the inauguration on Friday, so he's gonna come on Saturday, which is a little bit different at the MMA meeting.
But he's. But if he's coming to talk about it, we can hope that's a good sign.
Yes. He has been, uh, very, uh, very clear the last couple of times he comes. He was very direct, uh, with what's gonna be in the numbers for local aid. Um, they will, uh, department of revenue will be prepped and they, you know, put it on the website that day, they hand out, and they'll tell you exactly what it is. Now, we've been following clearly the state's having some issues with the budget. Um, you know, we're certainly not expecting any kind of large increase, but it will be good to get this initial look to know. So we'll have that for you at your next meeting.
So what time is he presenting on Saturday?
Um, at the business meeting, I think that's nine or ten on Saturday morning. You know, he's traditionally there first thing Friday morning at the opening session. Uh, he, they sent out something.
Much smaller audience on Saturday, isn't it?
The lieutenant governor is gonna do the Friday morning, uh, but he's gonna come on Saturday to, to still give that budget update.
Attorney, your meeting, probably during that meeting that you'll be at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the next slide is not, uh, is similar to what you looked at, at your last meeting, but we did just kinda go through this with the FinCom. Uh, and it was just a quick reminder that when we look at what we have to factor into the budget each year, uh, you know, kinda what's traditionally our base budget. Uh, so for FY eighteen, we know with fixed cost increases, uh, small increase in OPEB, small increase in debt, that's about one point eight million dollars. Uh, and primarily that fixed cost increase is coming from our health insurance costs and our pension costs. Uh, when we look at the operating budget, the school and municipal, uh, to provide a one percent increase to that budget now costs about six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, with about four hundred and twenty thousand of that for the school budget and a hundred and ninety thousand for municipal. So to look at about a two and a half percent increase costs us one point five million dollars. So with our fixed costs and a two and a half percent increase on the operating budget, that's about three point three million dollars that we would need, uh, to fund that for FY eighteen. And then on the revenue at the bottom, um, what we would have in new revenue, without looking at any new growth coming in from university station. So just really our traditional revenue under Prop two and a half is about three point one million. So really, you know, and this is consistent year to year, with our normal growth under Prop two and a half, without new commercial revenue, we're able to fund about a two and a half percent increase to operating budgets, or certainly within that range, two and a half or three percent. The challenge is, you know, to try to fund budgets above that while also providing for other things. Um, and using the new growth money for any direct service costs or other tax relief or other, uh, commitments we, we might have. And again, that's pretty consistent over the years, that it takes some type of extra funds to fund above the two and a half to three percent increase. So we really tried to go through that, make sure everyone, um, on FinCom understood that. We have been able the last two years to fund the budgets at a higher level than the two and a half, uh, but it has used quite a bit of the university station money, um, to do so. We've used, you know, about, uh, a million dollars over the last two years for the schools, um, and about, uh, oh, I'm sorry, one point eight million for the schools over the last two years, and about seven hundred thousand for the town. Um, and so we've funded the, uh, school budget over five percent for each of the last two years, and the municipal about four percent each of the last two years. So certainly that's, you know, helped those budgets, but that's really not a sustainable level to us. And, and we just wanna, we, you know, we did spend a great deal of time with FinCom kinda going through that, how we were able to do it the last couple of years, but that it took a significant amount of that money, and it's really not kinda our normal level, um, of budget. And the other thing we went through, uh, again, where there's new members on FinCom was, um, you know, something we talked a great deal about last year was, you know, trying to balance everything and address multiple areas. That, you know, when we look at our overall financial picture, when the selectmen are doing the budget, you're trying to handle so many things. Uh, including the operating budget, but also the capital budget, making sure we have appropriate reserve accounts, making sure we're taking care of our liabilities such as our pension and OPEB costs, uh, making sure our service levels are good, and all of that factoring in on what does that do to the tax bill. So we've worked really, really hard the last couple of years to keep working on that balance. Um, and it's, you know, not an easy thing. Um, and sometimes there are demands in one area over another, and we're trying to make sure that we're kinda handling all of them. I will say that there were members on the FinCom, particularly some of those longer-term members, who really, uh, commended the selectmen on what you've done the last couple of years, uh, in this area, and really, uh, being able to take in some of that new commercial revenue and address multiple areas, you know, particularly in the capital needs and the reserve accounts, as well as the operating budgets. That we're looking at all of those broad categories. Uh, and we, I talked with them about that, we'll see the same efforts in this year's budget, uh, that it will be to try to get to all of those things. You know, and maybe try to continue with some, uh, tax relief as we did in the current year. Then just quickly on the municipal budget, we're continuing to work on the municipal budget. Uh, the current municipal budget is about eighteen point eight million dollars, and the pie chart shows you how that's distributed with almost seventy percent of that money goes to public safety and DPW. That's where the bulk of our funds go, it's where the bulk of our staffing is, uh, really what a municipal, uh, budget does is provide for that area. Our police and fire and DPW, uh, and all of those services. Uh, our base budget increase for FY eighteen right now is about three point three percent. So that's down from when I was in with you last time, as we've kinda gone through and really tried to streamline the requests and work with the departments. Uh, so that's our base budget without any, uh, new position requests. Uh, about a three point three percent increase or six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, provides for all of our, uh, contractual salary obligations, again, does not include new positions. What we would continue to do over the next month is look at some of those new position requests. Uh, we gotta talk to the board about that, uh, looking particularly in our public safety, staffing, police and fire, uh, and then the one new, uh, request in the library. So we'll be able to spend the next couple of weeks, now that we've kinda taken, uh, a better look at that base budget, to really go through some of those new requests, do some analysis and get that to you, uh, for your deliberation over the, over the next month. And then one other item we'll continue to work on is, um, you know, and after this weekend, we had talked about, should we increase, uh, the snow and ice budget incrementally? Uh, so that, we have not done that yet in the base budget, and that's something you can continue to consider over the next month. So we'll, we'll work on those new, uh, requests and, and really get that data to you. Uh, and so that leaves us, you know, with our next month, January is a busy month for us in budget development. Uh, we have lots of meetings scheduled for the month, uh, working with different budget groups. Our long-range financial planning group is meeting, our budget steering committee. Uh, we'll continue to go through the revenue estimates and see if there's any updates to that, again, particularly with the state aid. We'll continue focusing on the municipal budget, uh, primarily focusing on those new requests. Uh, we'll prepare the draft financial, uh, capital articles for your review, and the, and the long-range committee will go through that, uh, again this week and get some proposals to you, uh, and all of that, uh, in preparation for coming back to you at the end of the month. Uh, it's your January thirtieth meeting to kinda go through another budget update. And at that point, after that meeting is when we kinda print the proposed budget at that point. We print the, uh, budget documents. Those are the initial budgets that will go to FinCom as they start their review, uh, with the, with the municipal budget and with the overall budget and the capital budget. Alright, that's where we're at, much that we're reviewing in January, and back to, uh, at the end of the month.
Any questions?
No. Give up to the board.
So I guess the, the one piece, Pam, that I've kind of floated with you and Mike over time is to look at potentially, um, having some sort of study about a potential rink, which the town did have a rink way back in time. Um, just to augment the high school program, to help with town programs. I know it's been surfaced over the years, various times, but I would, it, I would like, um, to see if there's a flavor from the, my colleagues, to at least get some sort of study, to have some sort of document, that we could at least make a decision or bring it forward to say a yes or no, rather than have it floating. So I, I would put that out there as a consideration.
My question is, has, has anything been discussed with the recreation commission or department on doing that?
Uh, it's been brought up with the, with the recreation director. I don't know how fresh he's taken it.
Yeah, again, I think it's, it's, it's an issue that's kinda surfaced all the time, and then it's never really fully flushed out. And so I, I would just, at some point, like to do it. I think it would be a great thing for the town, but obviously we need to answer a whole host of questions. Costs being number one, ability to find land, number two. Um, understanding that there is an initial capital outlay to get it going, but then it can be its own source of revenue. So there's a whole bunch of things. There are a lot of pros and cons, and I think it's been discussed, like, you know, various people have approached me over the years with, um, this group had looked at it, that group had looked at it, and I would just like to kind of bring it forward, get one concise document and make a decision.
Is there a, um, does the hockey, hockey organization have leadership that would want to spearhead this if we were to do it? Or how do we, how, do you remember how anything like this has been done in the past?
Well, I, there have been times when the hockey association or people on the hockey association have come to me with various ideas about floating it and, and bringing it forward, and like John had said, it keeps getting floated and then dropped, and then floated and then dropped.
Kinda like the temperature.
Yeah, oftentimes it's because the hockey association, like other sports associations, they turn over.
Right.
When the turnover occurs.
So you're saying, let's have the town take more of the lead?
Probably two thousand thirteen or fourteen now, but there was a lot of chatter, there was a lot of activity, and to Mike's point, what happens is the kids kinda move on, so the parents kinda move on. So it's, it's, it's almost handed down from generation to generation to get some energy going.
And John, uh, Tom, who's a longtime hockey guy, you, you've seen this for
Oh, yeah.
Like forty years, right?
Yeah, the one hockey rink we had in town was privately owned.
Oh, no, I knew that. I wasn't trying to say the town, but it, it existed in Westwood.
Yes, yeah.
And so the challenge is now
Great resource, folks.
Where there's so much privatization of the rinks, it's just harder and harder for the town. And, you know, don't forget, within the past five or six years, we've won a state tournament, both the boys and the girls. So it would augment an existing program.
So do we have any idea what a feasibility study would cost, or is this something you have to look into?
I can look into it.
Yeah, I just want to get it as a placeholder and then get some ideas.
We, we do have, um, you know, in our capital budget that goes at town meeting, we'll have like a municipal capital and school capital, and then we kinda have an other capital, which are more kinda, you know, one-time type of, uh, capital items. Uh, so it could be something that goes into that category, the study.
So Mike, maybe you and I can reach out to Compass or
Yeah.
One of those groups for an idea.
Okay.
As a former hockey mom, I, I would love to see a rink in town, so.
Norwood was being done by an association out of Boston, so, but I can talk to John about that.
They tried, they didn't succeed, though, right?
No.
Well, uh, the, what I keep hearing is they're still trying.
Well, again, I mean, I think, you know,
It's a hard, it's a hard.
We shouldn't, and we shouldn't dismiss it, maybe there is a public-private partnership out there.
Yeah.
We just need that entity to kinda.
There's another school in town that might be interested in participating too.
That's right. And they might have some land.
Yeah, they might have some land.
If there's passion, you better try.
So Mike and I will follow up.
Okay, great. Any comments?
No.
You're speechless, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Uh, thanks for the update. Mr. Philbin. Energy. So we have a lot of information in our packet, but I'm hoping you'll be able to give us a little summary of what Westwood has accomplished so far and things we should be considering as we look ahead in terms of energy conservation, climate change, what further actions we should be taking, so I'll turn it over to you.
Alright, if you would, uh, next slide.
Right there.
Oh, oh, it's here, I didn't even.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You're on your own, Tom.
I'm on my own.
Yeah.
Alright, but we have all of you. The, uh, Governor Baker has recently issued a directive, and he has essentially, uh, ordered Commonwealth itself to begin a whole series of changes to encourage, uh, incentives that'll help with potential climate change. We're starting to see the impact of this directive itself on the seaport area, for example, in Boston. The most recent construction by ever source had to be raised six feet and had to have special pilings and be above what potential sea levels might be, might impact and might happen by the year two thousand and fifty. There's also a joint venture now between the city of Boston and Holland to develop a diking plan for the downtown Boston, because if you see downtown Boston before they filled in, and then now, and then after climate change, it's worse than it was before they filled in. So they're gonna have to do something if there's any kind of a sea change, uh, in the future. There's arguments about whether how realistic some of these numbers are, but with the public health mentality, if you're wrong, it's a disaster, so you better do something about it to prevent the disaster happening. And if you do the work now, worst case you end up with a nice dyke around the city of Boston and nothing, nothing really bad then has happened. Massachusetts also is now directing the communities around, out into the different parts of the state to do something similar. And they're encouraging everybody to prepare for the possibilities of violent storms in particular, which would be happening along with climate change. So those are the basic reasons that are driving it. There is an office that's been established by the state, there's an office that's been established by the city of Boston. And they're encouraging conservation, they're encouraging all kinds of solar development and they're encouraging electric cars to the extent they can. And there are going to be all kinds of new programs that are going to be developed throughout the Commonwealth with climate change in mind and doing whatever they can. Between now and the year two thousand and twenty, they want to reduce the amount of CO2 emissions to twenty-five percent of what they were in nineteen ninety. And by the year two thousand and fifty, which I don't really have to worry about very much, but two thousand and fifty, they expect to essentially have it at the near zero. So that brings us to what are we doing? Fortunately, I think we have been doing quite a bit in terms of things that are going to help with climate change. We have the solar program, which is now, we have seven hundred plus kilowatts of electric installed and operating. It goes online toward the end of this month. And for approximately eight months of the year, it'll generate in excess of a hundred thousand dollars in savings credits to the town by way of electric. It'll generate something in the other four months as well, that's kind of the way they, they plan these things out. They look for very little to be generated in the winters, the November, December, January, February time period, and then they go from March on. They guarantee a certain amount, so if it falls below that amount, the contractor actually has to make up the money to the town. So that's well underway now, and again, it's going to be hot within the next, in terms of connecting to the grid in the next couple of days, or next week at the latest. All the switchovers have been going on, it's really interesting, it's really
They're all on rooftops, right?
They're all on, what, pardon?
Rooftops.
All on rooftops.
The panels are on rooftops.
They're on Downey, Martha Jones, Thurston and on the high school. The fire station, we had to take all the, since it's so late in coming, being brought over, we had to take all the materials and we're going to actually store them and won't be able to put it up until sometime in probably summer.
So on the news station?
Pardon?
On the news station?
On the news station, right. So there is a cost to us for that, about a penny a kilowatt, or a fraction of a penny a kilowatt, not being able to get that up. But that's small in the big picture. We have two electric vehicles now, which is Nora's department. And we have a charging station installed, they're up and running satisfactorily, the charging station is finally in. The hardest thing there was finding labor who would do it for the price I was trying to keep it essentially free. And it took almost two months to find someone who would do it for the price I was willing to pay. But it's in now, it's operating and it's up. Last year we, and rather over the history of the green communities and just before, we are now approaching nearly a million dollars in a combination of energy, green community grants and incentives from ever source. And the nice thing about this million dollars is it's a kind of an investment that is self living. It turns over more to the school, approximately ten to twenty percent of the million. In each year, we have all of this in place, it comes back to the, comebacks of the community itself. So it's a great investment, it's an investment that pays for itself in a very, usually five or less years you plan on. And the town has developed a, now by way of tracking what we're doing, we have all of our energy information in a very great form and it's credited Tish who works over at DPW. And we have it down to the point now where we have the number of BTUs equivalent for all the different kinds of fuels. We're going to convert that to CO2 equivalents, I will be able to track the CO2 load that the town imposes on the, on the environment and then monitor that CO2 level over time.
Is that conversion a mathematical conversion?
It's a strict, easy, it's easy.
Formulatic?
It's a formula, but it's by region of the country. For example, the northeast has a lot of hydro, very little oil and no coal and a lot of gas, which makes us a lot cleaner, so that conversion factor is lots smaller than it would be if you lived in Ohio. Where we have none, a lot of coal. So anyway, we were about to do that, but then we're about to make the report on an annual basis and track the CO2 levels year to year as they come and go back in history and do the same thing.
So when, when will you have something you can pass along to us on that report?
Probably in a month or two. We should have those, the first ones looking.
I think we'd be very good if we could see that when it's ready.
Nice to put it in the newsletter to the community.
Yeah, that's, that's something I haven't been frankly negligent on, I haven't thought about enough, that there's a lot we can write up that has not gotten to the, lots have been going on that we haven't advertised to the community.
Well, good, I mean, it's, give a lot of good information and find out the deadlines so you know when the next one is and see if you can get something in.
Yep, that's the intention. Then we look for the next phase in two thousand and seventeen. And we're going to closely monitor again the CO2 as I was just saying, and we're going to start the reporting process and the tracking process of what we're doing. We're going to expand the solar, we're already having a number of meetings with the expansion of solar. We're looking to get another megawatt of capacity online. If we're successful in essentially doubling what we have, we will then be in a position where nearly forty percent of the town's electric consumption will be via solar or credited by solar generation. So it'll be very, it'll be dramatic. And again, a huge impact in terms of climate change, this is a very positive thing that the town can do. There's nothing better than solar in terms of the impact on climate change. Then, let's see what we have here, the green communities. We again are going to be applying for more grants with green communities this year and obviously more incentives from ever source. We're asking, and I'll, I'll come to my that at the end, that we potentially get a capital allotment of a certain amount of money. If we're to do that, it, it definitely increases our chances dramatically that we'll get the green communities grant. If they see the towns contributing, they're far more likely to give you a, a full benefit than they would if they see you doing nothing and just trying to depend a hundred percent on what you get from green communities to do these conservation.
Has that been the same hurdle in the past couple of years, or is it becoming more competitive?
Yo, last year, see, with the last couple of years, we were golden because we had put up a half a million bucks for the streetlights. And I counted that as the town contribution to our efficiency.
All state grant programs, that is the best way to get a grant is put some money out.
Yeah, then you get a multitude return on it.
Because they get to say that they've gotten something.
It's a joint venture versus a
Versus just relying on them.
So that's what, that's going to be the, the next big push. And then lastly, we want to have a policy developed for future building construction in the town. We're going to try and follow some of the new guidelines. There have been a number of buildings put up by the state as models, which essentially have zero consumption. There's a building, forty, fifty thousand square foot office building now in Marlboro owned by the state that has zero consumption of electric. And it actually has a positive fifteen hundred dollars or so of credits for overproducing what they're consuming. So they literally year round, air conditioning, electric, they got a zero utility bill by way of design. What I'm trying to do is get information on what does that mean by way of cost of construction and so forth. But a lot of it has been the fact that they, they designed the building with very strong roof structures and they oriented the building in a certain way so that it faced south. And then they literally covered the entire south facing part of the roof, they made that the major size. And they covered it totally with solar panels, so they needed to generate a lot of electricity. And then all the normal penetrations that you have to avoid, they put on the other side of the building. And then they use the double wall construction instead of, instead of a six foot or a single four, they use two, two fourth inch walls that they separate by the slight air barrier and then they put the insulation between. So it's a type of construction, that does not add much to construction as it turns out. It's in the framing, it adds maybe a ten, twenty percent, and when you take that in the overall construction, it's a, it tends to be a small piece of the action. So in any event, that's the model and that's what the, the state is pushing. And that's the kind of a thing that we should think of in terms of having as a goal of what we want to do as a town, but in terms of new building construction. There is a guide that's put out by the utilities now called Approach to Zero, which has a lot of other things that we should be shooting for. It was studied when we did the police station and it was studied when we did the fire station, but they weren't really yet, I think nobody was really yet ready to take that step to see what they could do in those cases.
I'd be curious to know what is going on at state level communication wise with the school building authority? Are they getting directives from the state?
I'm sure
Something to look into.
I'm sure that's going to happen, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be amazed if it didn't. But in any event, at this point, that's, that's something to be determined. So lastly, my request is I would love to get a capital item of approximately a hundred and fifty thousand. This is the kind of investment that will again supplement all of the energy conservation programs that we're have on a list that we're trying to implement over the next year. It would enhance our ability to get green community grants just because of it. And lastly, it would essentially fund if we tried, chose to do it as part of the climate change initiative, they're asking the communities to look at their own vulnerability to climate change. We have nothing like that in Westwood, but there are a number of consultants that do that work now. And for a relatively small amount of money, we could have a vulnerability study where somebody would come by and tell you where and what in Westwood we would have to look out for in case of climate change of any significance. Maybe nothing, it may be something very dramatic.
Is that beyond your skill set?
I personally couldn't do it, no. So what I'm asking for really is the, a capital item budget of that hundred and fifty. It's one of the few investments that the town will make where they'll get a, they'll probably get it back in four, five, six years by way of the benefits that'll spin off of it. And that plus the monies that we would hopefully get from green communities and from the incentives from ever source. I think between those three sources, we could probably fund somewhere between five and six hundred thousand dollars in new projects in two thousand and seventeen, plus the solar.
It makes sense, but it'd be nice to have some detail as to what projects you think and what you'd be applying to the green communities.
Yeah, I have a, I have a list of the projects already. In fact, we're, we're performing audits at the high school, Downey, and not Downey, rather Martha Jones. A big chunk might go to the recreation center there with a lot of work being done, the lighting in the pool area, variable speed drives on the pumping systems in the basement to cut their consumption. And then there's a whole lot of little things we would do with other odds and ends of streetlights all over the place in the Martha Jones and Downey, again those boxy lights you see. And then the whole back of the high school is going to be done in the next few, hopefully in February second or expect delivery, we're going to do the whole parking lot of the high school with new lights. So there are a lot of projects that
Okay.
are out there.
I think when we're discussing it further and if we take it on to the finance commission, we need that kind of detail.
Okay, I intend then to prepare the, the request and put the detail you need.
Yeah, please do. I, I don't see any reason why not, anybody disagree?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Perfect.
That's it in general.
That's just what we needed, perfect update, thank you.
Thanks Tom.
Here's a little, you want to show them a little?
Yes, yeah, we have a little, maybe.
Little show and tell?
Yeah, a little show and tell here that it's exciting, frankly, this solar thing has come so painlessly. This is a drone which we sent up over Downey School.
We'll never see this perspective otherwise.
And you cannot see anything as you walk around the school unless you get up on your tiptoes and find the elevated area. And Downey has, will probably generate a percent more than they consume. And they will probably, will be exporting power to the, actually to the high school account from Downey. And the more energy efficiency we put into Downey, the more export they will have. So this program we just completed there will change all their lighting, I think that's going to have a impact on the whole consumption.
You should send this to the school committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll put it on the town's website too.
Yeah, I'm going to take that drone out to Newton South, Wayland, and I forget the other school, there's a third. I'm going to have it fly over the canopies in the parking lots on the high school.
Oh, just show.
Pictures, because the newer ones that they're doing like at Newton South, I hear are quite attractive in terms of how they paint them and design them and orient them. And they're also starting to use them now as, where you have a parking, everybody thinks where you have parking nose to nose, you've got to put the canopy down the middle. But we found out in some of the schools where you have the parking like you see there up against a wall, if you have a sidewalk on the other side of that wall and you put the canopy along the edge, you shelter the sidewalk from the people in winter as well, so they have a, a covered area that they can walk to if they're going back and forth to some of the facility buildings.
It'd be like the windmills, people will want to see them soon.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Anyway, that's just a quick shot.
People go to Copenhagen to see them, it's a tourist attraction in Copenhagen to see those windmills.
Yeah, that's the reason they go to Copenhagen.
That's, that's why they're probably, if you go to Germany, it's even worse. It's even worse, what I was shocked at is how many of them are standing still.
For all of us going to Copenhagen.
Not working, yeah.
Okay. Tom, thanks, excellent. Okay, on to what I think a lot of the audience is here for. Our next agenda item is to establish and appoint a fire department task force. So, a little bit of background. We anticipate that within the next year, our fire chief will be retiring because he will reach a mandatory age of sixty-five for retirement. And not that we are anywhere near starting a process on that, he is fully the chief in the meantime. We are talking about putting together a task force to look at the, the role of the fire chief relative to the town administration and in light of the fact that we've gone through charter changes. So we tonight are discussing putting together this task force and populating it. So Mike, do you want to make any comments?
Oh, I, I think that, you know, as you mentioned, the charter, we had the charter change, which rearranged the way appointments are made in town, so it's one of the factors. The other major factor is the fact that we removed the department and the, the chief position from civil service and we never made any adjustments when we did it with the police chief. We created a bylaw, for instance, that protects him in the way civil service would protect the chief. And also we went through a contract process as a result of that as well. So those are issues we didn't look at at the time we removed the, the department from civil service and we should. And then there's the process by which we would go about recruiting and selecting the next fire chief. What, what we need and we'd want to identify what our needs are. So this task force would have a, a number of areas to look at and to advise the board of selectmen before you kick into the process. And also to possibly have something for town meeting. We purposely held three articles for action on town meeting floor, for instance, for the bylaw that was created for the police chief, you probably want to have a comparable bylaw created for the fire.
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet, but that, but, so there are articles on hold, but they're not populated with any ideas yet.
Okay, and the proposal we have would suggest or recommend a task force comprised of a variety of town residents, many of whom have served on boards either do now or have in the recent past. The recommendation is that we have one member from the board of selectmen, Mr. Hickey, that former selectman Patrick Ahern be on and chair this committee. Phil Shapiro come back from retirement, although he hasn't fully retired, he's also on the, still on the OPEB task force, right?
Yeah.
Elizabeth Phillips, who is a member of the recreation commission, former head of the commission and an HR professional. Susan Flanagan Cahill, audit committee member for the town. Jim Connors, a sewer commission member and former FinCom member and past chair of the FinCom. Joe Emerson, personnel board member and he's chair presently.
Yes, yes.
And have two ex officio members, Mr. Gillette and Joan Murray, who is head, our human resource director. Any questions or comments from the board before I open it up to the public?
No. So Tom, just help me understand this. So when I look at chapter forty-eight, the section forty-two and forty-two A, and that's ultimately what we're studying in terms of the governance, the whole piece. But what, which do we fall into now, forty-two or forty-two? But what, which do we fall into now, forty-two or forty-two A?
Under forty-two.
And that's mass general law?
That's mass general, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
I assume all of you have been waiting here for a while. So do you have a spokesperson or am I gonna take hands? Does somebody want to comment or are you just here to observe? It's up to you. Can you just identify yourself, please, for the record? Hi, Richie.
My, my, one of the questions I have is, uh, do you have anyone with a public safety background on this task force?
Well, we are going to be turning to the current chief as an advisor when needed to the task force. Um, to answer your question, but also the people who are on it are very familiar with the town, so two parts to your, one question you didn't ask and one you did.
Now, we will only put a member of a union on this task force?
Um, I will open it up for comment. I have my own thoughts, but, uh, when we were.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what, what would the point of that be? Like, what?
Task with selecting a new chief.
Uh, this group is not.
Right.
Well, you want input on the process to.
The process, right.
Well, this is a new process for us because we're on civil service where there's no longer a testing process or an assessment center or something like that. This is new to us too. And I think we'd like to get in on the ground floor to see how this process is going to move forward and have some input or just some advisory so we can get some hard questions answered also.
Questions?
Are all firefighters now civil service?
The existing firefighter, firefighters that have not been promoted. So all new firefighters that come onto the force since we removed it from civil service and any firefighters who are promoted do so outside civil service. All firefighters that are not, that remain in their positions and were under civil service in those positions when they started them continue to be covered by civil service. So the department technically is, is the.
bifurcated system.
Bifurcated system, that's right.
And have we hired any?
We have hired some firefighters since we've been, since we've been done, and I believe we've promoted some as well. Um, not yet, no, okay. We haven't promoted anyone yet, uh, but we have, we have hired since we came up.
Yeah, and I appreciate you putting it out there. I think it's important that we're always engaging and talking. So I don't rule out that the task force would be reaching out and seeking input. I don't, I don't necessarily know that it's incumbent to have a union member sit on the committee though. It's just my thoughts.
Well, I, you know, one of the issues, and there probably are a few, is that we don't know who will be applying. And so there's a little bit of a bias to have them on, but I think John is right. I think, you know, we, this task force, and it hasn't even met because we haven't constituted it yet, needs to kind of come together and see what they need to know. And I don't think they want to work in a vacuum. So if, um, you all want to have a designee as a person they could go to if they need to, we'd be open to that. I don't know if you can all agree on that, but, um.
Well, we, we, we appreciate that. It is, so you're not closing the door from anyone, any interior or.
Not from conversations, but we need it, so every so often the board of selectmen will put together a task force for one reason or another. As you gentlemen know as well as anybody, we did so for the public safety facilities. And it's where people can roll up their sleeves and get work done and then come back to the board of selectmen with recommendations. So that a lot of things can be vetted, different people can go and obtain information. Who we obtain it from could be a variety of people, just like we did with the, the building projects. Um, there was the consultant study on staffing. There was the consultant that helped us look at all site alternatives. There were so many layers and it wasn't all people on the task force, but so much information that we use. And we take it very seriously. We put them together at the task force when we need this kind of feet on the ground, rolling up the sleeves and doing a lot of analytical work that we can't do at a meeting like this. So, um, we tend to use them very effectively and not just, if Pat Ahern sat here, he would say, we don't put task force together to assign somebody something and have it drift away, like this is how we get rid of it. We sign it to a task force. We do it where we really want information to come back to us. Um, it's the beginning of a process. As you said, it may lead to town meeting action, but it isn't the process for hiring a chief because your chief and our chief has not retired yet. So we aren't doing that process yet, but we want advice because it is the first time in a long time and it's under different rules.
Under different rules, yes.
Different rules than when the, when Bill Stogel became chief twenty years ago? How many years ago are we at? About twenty. Um, and I remind you, he is still the chief. As long as he has got that hat, he's still the chief. So if you want to tell us that there are people that you'd like us to go to, because we certainly don't want to go over to the fire department and say which one of you guys wants to talk to us today.
So, so we could send you a letter with, with a couple of people's names on it? That's sufficient?
Sure. Sure.
I think we could with that, definitely.
Um, address it to Mr. Gillette. All right, for purpose of, yeah.
We appreciate it. We appreciate it.
And, you know, because it hasn't been done yet and they haven't met yet, we really haven't, you know, defined the whole thing. They're gonna have to work on it and John will be part of that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, we, as Nancy said, I mean, we haven't met yet. All right, so this is, we don't know if we don't know. And, um, you know, I for one, and I think the board as a whole and, and Mike, we never want to dismiss engagement. So, you know, we're happy to have conversations with folks.
Like you said, we, we really appreciate your time and listening to us.
Yeah, I know, appreciate your time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's really nice to see all of you here tonight. Um.
Send you away with, with a couple of names, that's okay.
And can we also say we appreciate what you do for the town? You know, you really, you are important to this community and you do a great job. It matters. And I can't wait for you to, most of you, some of you, to be in that lovely new building.
At some point.
We'll get there.
We're getting there.
We're in the year that it will happen. Um, any other comments from anybody who took the time to be here?
I have one question. Bill, what, um, retired from the fire department. Did you put this out, an offer to residents of the town to be on this committee at all?
No, we did not.
Or was this strictly a handpicked?
Yep.
Three members of the board of selectmen said we want these people.
We, we discussed it with the town administrator and, uh, it's, it's a, at the board's discretion, so it is, um, we selected the individuals.
So you're not looking for any outside people to take part in?
Not, not for this task force, not for this task force, which is not uncommon either for how we've put them together in the past.
It seems short sighted.
Duly noted. Anybody else? Any other comments from the board? Uh, so we have the names, we have a suggestion, a recommendation for a task force, none of which has been approved yet, so motion?
So I move that we establish a task force and appoint, um, the above mentioned individuals to serve terms effective through July thirty-first, two thousand seven, uh, December. Excuse me, through December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Again, thank you very much for coming in and sitting through so much of the agenda. Hopefully you found some of it interesting. Um, we have a couple more items to go through before we're done tonight. Next on the agenda is the Mass Municipal Association Annual Business Meeting delegation. So, Mike, what do you?
Uh, I'm, I'm suggesting that the board of selectmen, as we've done in the past, appoint me to, uh, serve, uh, as the voting member at the MMA conference for the annual business, which is held on Saturday morning.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Motion?
You don't want to go in it? Because that's when the governor's gonna be there to tell us all.
I think Mr. Gillette should be our representative and if I decide to go, so be it.
All right, so I move that we authorize the chairman, or chairperson, to sign a voting authorization form, which authorizes the town administrator to vote for Westwood at the annual business meeting for the MMA.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. All right, um, next on the item, on the agenda, excuse me, is a brief discussion on the Westwood School Superintendent search. We, like everyone else, has been notified that Dr. Antonucci will be leaving Westwood at the end of this school year, which is June thirtieth, uh, to become superintendent in Duxbury. And the school committee is pursuing, um, a, a search process for the next superintendent and they are working with future management systems to facilitate the process. Uh, they have let us know that, and the community, that there is a questionnaire you can complete online up until Friday, January twenty-seventh, that will provide community input into, uh, for consideration as they go forth with this search. They have also let us know that at their meeting, or a meeting on January seventeenth, they are holding a focus group meeting at seven PM in, until late thirty PM in the teacher's lounge of the high school. And the public is welcome, but it is, um, a focus group set up where the public can observe, but not participate or provide comment. And then the next item is January nineteenth in the morning, from nine AM till ten thirty AM. Uh, one of their focus group meetings will be held that morning and it's for municipal employees and the board of selectmen to attend. So I know there are other opportunities for people. This happens to be the one that applies to us. And is that a public meeting? Do you know?
I, I believe.
Can any or all of us attend?
You all can attend, um.
If we all attend, it needs to be a public meeting.
Public meeting, okay. So let me, let me verify that, but I believe it is a public meeting.
I, I know I'm able to attend and would like to.
Yeah, I was planning on attending. I mean, we're not gonna deliberate anything outside of.
Yeah, but if we're all there, it's a public, it needs to be posted as a public meeting.
Public, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So.
Just like Christina, we started to ask them up along with.
I think if it involves deliberations.
I know, but you know what? It is gone, so the pendulum has won.
So anyway, we, it sounds like all three of us plan on attending, so whatever we need to do to.
To, to attend.
Make sure we do attend.
Somebody tell us what's right.
Yeah, I'll find out tomorrow.
The only other thing I would add, Nancy, is, um, in addition to the online survey, the, um, parents receive a direct email as well with a link to the survey. So if anything, encourage folks to.
Yes.
Complete that. I think it's important.
I actually did. It was very easy. Um, so for people who are hearing this and want to know how to do the survey, it is at www.surveymonkey, which is all one word, S U R V E Y M O N K E Y, M O U S E, no. Surveymonkey.com backslash R backslash Westwood three. And I'm sure you can contact the school department if what I said isn't clear and you want to complete that. And it is available for anyone in the community to complete. Anything else we need to do on that one? I think we're good?
No, we're good.
Okay. Our next and final action item tonight is to close the town meeting warrant. But before we close it, I think we should talk about what we have before us briefly. So we opened the warrant back in December and is, are, as is our practice, we close it at the first meeting in January and that was the notification that was provided, um, back when we first opened the warrant. We have, this is just the beginning of a long process. We have a list of warrant articles, many brought forth by the board of selectmen. Uh, we have what looks to be three petitioner articles. Uh, one was carried over from the fall when we did not have a fall town meeting. And we are newly in receipt of two other petition articles that I think came in at the end of last week. Late last week you heard from the petitioner, uh, two articles?
They came in this morning.
Oh, they officially came in this morning?
Petitions came in. Yeah, Nora and I have been going back and forth with petitioner since Friday afternoon.
Yep. Okay, and we'll circle back to that, but the other, otherwise the articles come from the planning board. Um, and then we have some miscellaneous articles held for things that may come up, such as the discussion we just had regarding the, uh, fire chief's position. Uh, Nora, the petitioner articles that just came in, you and I had a chance to speak briefly, that you said they are really not written in a form that will make it through the town meeting process, that they would need to be amended at town meeting floor. Have you talked to the petitioner about that?
I've communicated by email with Debbie Conant, who is the originator of the petition. I think there were thirteen or fourteen other people who signed the petition. And I, in my communications with Debbie, I mentioned that I don't believe that the, the way the article's written, it achieves the goals that the petitioners are looking to achieve, but I also am concerned that it, if it passed at town meeting, would not pass muster with the attorney general's office. And my main concern for that is that the, uh, the way the petition article is written, it amends the zoning bylaw. Two FMUOD districts we have in the zoning bylaw, FMUOD six, which pertains to Washington Street, and FMUOD seven, which pertains to Washington Street.
Uh, High Street.
I'm sorry, High Street. It, it removes all but one of the parcels in each of those districts. So leaving overlay districts that are a single parcel and a single parcel in both cases that's undersized for the purposes of the overlay district. So I think that's an extreme form of spot zoning.
I was gonna say that's spot zoning.
And I think it, I think it will be overturned if it would, if it's, if it passes town meeting and is submitted to the attorney general's office. So I, Tom had forwarded me the emails over the weekend. I couldn't see them until this morning. When I did, I went through them and I made suggestions for how I think they could improve upon the articles. Uh, I sent those suggestions to Debbie Conant and suggested that she either come to the meeting tonight or have some of the petitioners come, or ask me to speak on her behalf. So I don't think she was able to come, um, and I don't know if there are any petitioners who are here. I don't think there are, um. My, my suggestion in asking her to come or to have me speak on behalf was to ask you if you would accept the articles as written to hold a place on the warrant, but allow the petitioners to consider revised language and get new signatories. So I, if I understand this correctly, do that? Tom can explain if I'm wrong, but I think the original petitioners would have to re-sign an amended petition.
They would.
Otherwise you'd have combating articles.
Right, they're going petitions, yeah.
Right. So I think that you have a couple of weeks before your next meeting and if you're willing to allow them to come back, um, and I don't know if that would require reopening the warrant or just accepting amended.
Could we, okay, tell us how we would handle this?
You, you can make a place for it. You don't have to reopen the warrant.
Okay.
You can make a place and insert in that place the petition article you have. And then, uh, Nora and I can discuss it further. Because if what you have passes, it's not going to really go anywhere.
It's not gonna work. And it's not gonna impact the zoning map. It's just gonna impact.
Well, that's part of the problem. So the zoning map, the way this article is written, it doesn't amend the zoning map. So then zoning map would stay in place with the full overlay districts. And the bylaw language that describes the districts would differ from the zoning map.
This is why we encourage people to come in.
Yes.
And talk to town staff, which they didn't do until the last minute.
Yeah, last minute, but, uh.
Yep.
If you do that, if you set it aside, set a place for it.
So we're trying to accommodate.
Otherwise, yeah.
Right, but I do want to make it clear that that request to do that is not on behalf of the petitioner. They did not ask us to make that request, so.
Right, right, we're just.
Although.
It's our recommendation to you, but not a request of the petitioner. The petitioners would like the article as, as written placed on the warrant.
They choose to respond or not.
Yeah, I spoke to, um, Debbie Conant.
Yeah, Debbie Conant, yeah.
Uh, I done emails back and forth and indicated to her that, uh, if she could get signatures for what Nora has suggested, we'd be fine. Otherwise, you're gonna have to go to town meeting floor and try to get an amendment through.
And talk about.
And it's just too complicated, so it'd be much easier if we could just hold the spot and if the petitions decide they want to take advantage of that, fine. If they don't, then, well, they don't.
I for one would like to provide them with that opportunity. Um, it seems, um, very cumbersome that they would go through a whole process with the finance commission review, talking about an article they have before them, but then talking about wanting to amend it. I mean, we, we try, we have been telling people, come to us, come to staff in advance so that what you submit can be in proper order to be considered. And, you know, this isn't opining on the merits of the article. It's just giving them the opportunity to have it technically be correct. It's just giving them the opportunity to have it technically be correct, so that then the article can be appropriately vetted, yes.
So that they have the best chance, yes.
Yeah.
Actually, the charter as revised has a whole provision, whole section devoted to this very thing. Come in in advance.
I mean, I, I think it makes sense to do it only because what we're gonna do is we're gonna take a lot of time at FinCom. And go through all these other things and extra resources that are gonna be wasted, so if we give them the opportunity to fix it.
Exactly.
At least, at least if they're gonna go through it, it'll be worthwhile and not waste everyone's time.
We'll do our best to help them. It's up to them if they want to do it.
So, we can get back to them tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yes, yeah.
The only, the only thing that I'd add is that we, we have a long history of suggesting to people to do this. We've never had a taker, by the way. And, and what we've always suggested is that you simply have to have the same signatories on, on the removal of the article and the submission of the article.
They're gonna need their hands held through that, have a check.
The good news is, there's only, there's only fourteen, fourteen signatures.
There's only, yeah, there aren't a lot of people that sign, so.
And they're all, they're all neighbors, all her neighbors, so.
Well, all we can do is try, um, and we'll see where it goes. So, having said all that, we're not gonna walk through all the articles that we have here. There are some very standard ones. And then some are going to be unique to this year and, um, that would be the case for the planning board, who seems to have, yes, an ambitious agenda. I, just by number, I'm not talking about content again. Uh, is there any other discussion on the warrant or should we take a motion to close the warrant?
I move that we close the two thousand seventeen annual town meeting warrant and ask that all article sponsors prepare article language for the Finance and Warrant Commission's review and recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. And so, people know the calendar going forward. Um, the Finance Commission will be hearing from article sponsors on a preliminary basis at the end of January. On either Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, or Wednesday, January twenty-fifth. And then there are two scheduled public hearing dates. The first is Monday, March sixth and Tuesday, March seventh, if needed. And then again, at the end of the month, Monday, March twenty-seventh and Tuesday, March twenty-eighth. The Tuesday nights are usually held for, um, if there's extra time that's needed, but they aren't always used. Uh, so people know as well, there is a town election on April twenty-fifth. And then on Monday, May first, we have the annual town meeting, where the warrant articles that go through this process are taken up at our open town meeting. Okay, that's it for action items tonight. We now have the meeting minutes, uh, going back to November seventh. Are we ready to? Okay, let's start with November seventh. Any comments?
No, I can just read every single one. Christine, thank you.
Christine! Brevity, brevity. Okay, motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of November seventh, two thousand sixteen, as written, all seventeen pages of them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Do you have an opinion about that? Same as Mike?
Yes.
Okay, November twenty-eighth.
I move that we, uh, approve the minute, the minutes as written, at least it's typed out to ten pages.
Okay, you're being awful.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay, and lastly, what do we have?
She's getting more brief. She has nine pages this time, so I move to approve the minutes of December twelfth, two thousand sixteen, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay, I think our point's been made. Uh, thank you, Christine. They're very good minutes.
Very detailed, Christine.
We love your work. Okay, our next meeting, uh, is on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth. At six thirty PM, we will be meeting in the small meeting room at the library. And then we will convene, uh, to join whoever wants to, um, is that the night we go then go into FinCom?
Yeah, our, our sponsor.
Yep, and then our next full meeting will be on the following Monday, January thirtieth, at seven thirty PM, right here at, uh, Town Hall. Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Have a nice night.